It's now about, if the clock's right, it's about seven minutes after three and we're gonna call this budget work session to order. For the year twenty twenty-four. And I guess we're officially on the air now. We've officially started.
So, just FYI, I believe everybody knows this, but we are having technical difficulties with our AV system. So, this meeting will be recorded and it will be posted online, but we are unable to do the live stream today. That'll be for the work session and the meeting tonight. And the page, the landing page on the website does tell people that they're more than welcome to join us in person or listen to the audio file later.
Okay, so, to start, we had a couple of changes to the dollars since last week's meeting. We didn't have the lease figures and we have those now. We also-
The what figures, I'm sorry?
The vehicle leases.
Vehicle leases.
They're about three quarters of a million dollars. So, that's been rolled into the revenue and the expenses. We also had a couple of other changes. I was contacted by the Kent County Public Schools that the maintenance of effort number that I used from the handout that we got was understated and I needed to add two hundred and eighteen thousand to it, so I did that. So, the maintenance of effort funding is over seven hundred thousand instead of half a million. So, they're coming in, we still haven't, they're still telling us that the maintenance of effort calculations are not available. So, I haven't seen the calculation.
Then my question is, how do you come up with the number?
That's my question too, Ronnie.
I mean, in years past, and I don't know going into this, how much of Kerwin is a bill is affecting this or not? It was always the way with it went ever since they had that maintenance of effort. You had fifty, or you had ten kids increase times eighteen thousand some dollars apiece. It was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus, plus pay raises, salaries and things like that on top of it, whatever they were asking for. What is, what is the driving factor for them to say maintenance of effort is seven hundred and some thousand dollars? Because if we've had an increase in students, it'll be the first time in prob- first or second time maybe in twenty-five years.
So, that's why I keep asking for the formulas. Under Kerwin, I think there's several programs and pots of money and nobody's really sure because we haven't seen the formulas yet. If they're gonna do a separate MOE for each bucket of money that we have and then add it together? Or if there's still gonna be one overarching, you know, cost per pupil? Or if it's gonna be, you know, divided up? So, we just haven't seen it. So, the state's gotta be telling them because all across the state, school boards are, you know, telling counties what those numbers are. However, we haven't seen them yet. So, they said they hope, they think they're gonna get them in late April.
But their actual request is much more than seven hundred and some thousand. It's two point two million, the last I've seen, it could be higher now.
It's two hundred and eighteen thousand higher than I told you last week.
Okay, so-
So, it's two point six.
Two point six.
Uh, two point four, I guess.
Two point four.
Two point four, yeah. So, why don't we just walk through the top side numbers again since they're a little bit different?
And let me, I don't want me to interrupt you, but I want everybody to understand too. We're supposed to be getting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state, which is money that we're supposed to give to the Board of Education, which will then in turn increase that maintenance of effort, I understand, by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
If the directive is that we have to pay that two hundred and fifty above maintenance of effort, yes and well. So, we'll increase it forever.
Pat and I had a conversation yesterday, we pulled up the actual documents. In the capital budget for the state, it states that the two fifty is above what we gave them last year. Well, so the question is, can it, that seven hundred thousand of required MOE can be included in, as part of that seven hundred? If so, it's not going to affect the MOE number moving forward. If it's in addition to that seven hundred thousand, then it will.
So, we need some clarity on that, it really wasn't clear to us from reading.
Because the, the only way that you could have an increase in maintenance of effort in ru- in years past with the rules that we had in place was that you had to have an increase in population, school population. Now, that didn't, you know, obviously, we always gave them some because you've got pay raises and stuff. But the maintenance of effort figure was driven by, and we, and when they first implemented, we argued the fact that you don't wanna do this because what it does, it discourages the county from ever giving more money when you've got more because you can never take it away.
Absolutely.
When I was, when it was Mike Noonan and I sitting in here years and years ago, we've gave as much as a million and a half dollars back then to the school system because we had it. But now in today's, you'd be afraid to do something like that because you can't, then you're stuck with it the rest of your life. On bad years, you can't, you gotta come up with it. And that's, it was a terrible law to start with.
So, that, that the outline number, I think, is like thirty million five we're supposed to be paying when we get to the out here. You could add, whatever you give them above maintenance of effort, you just need to add it to that number because it's gonna flow all the way through.
Yeah.
And it really is a disincentive for counties to fund over MOE because anybody that's looking down the road at those large increases doesn't wanna, you know, have- we're struggling with how we can fund it as it sits, let alone if we added two million dollars to it.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to talk about those couple, those couple issues.
All right, so in your books in the overview section, you can either see it on the screen or you can see it in the book, see whatever is easiest for you. But this is what the revenues look like, the number's slightly higher. We're, we have about a six point one percent growth in, in revenue, budget to budget. So, it's a little higher and that's because the, the lease proceeds of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand sit here. They sit in the revenue and the expense, so it increases both numbers. So, and I think we talked about most of these categories haven't changed. Income tax reflects five percent over FY twenty-two, so that's from, that's a two-year-
Time gap.
Five percent and that mirrors the state projection. Property taxes are up three point two percent, so that's, that's one of the healthier increases that we've seen in recent years. Interest income is another place where we're really seeing a pickup. We have about half a million dollars more in revenue just because of rates. It really doesn't have to do with our balances as much as, as the rates climbing. Intergovernmental, I put in that two hundred and fifty thousand, it's labeled blueprint funding that we think we're gonna get from the state. So, we have a slight increase in highway users and detention center. Recreation and property transfer taxes, we're projecting them to drop about ten percent. They've really come down this year, so I'm hoping that number's good.
Pat, that, that go back one, that hundred and, hundred and four thousand dollars, that's the increase in the highway user funding?
It's a something in the six hundred thousand dollar range.
Is that right?
Out of the five hundred thousand, but it's still nowhere near the-
Two and a half million that they took away from us.
Yeah, absolutely. We have the lease proceeds, that two sixty-two is the difference between the value of the leases last year and this year and then others. So, we're seeing, we're going up about three point two million, which you would think, you know, puts you in pretty good shape. So, we look at the expense side. So, on the expense side, I updated the Board of Education number and it's now sitting at a two point four million dollar request. I don't think the lease capital is really the only other number that really changed in here, but we can roll through. The maintenance of effort increase in the Kent County Public Schools is, they're telling us, seven hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
It must mean something different than it did a couple of years ago.
I think the formulas have gotta be different. I mean, I don't think they're going off of last year's cost per pupil, they can't be.
Right.
Our students have not grown up.
Because I think we've still had a decrease in population, we, we haven't had an increase and that's what used to drive that number.
I think all the formulas have been redone and they're reflected in here somehow. As soon as we get them, you know, we can talk about them, but. So, their additional request primarily to fund a salary increase is just under one point seven million. So, they're, they're looking for two, out of the three point two that we have, they're looking for two point four of it. Salaries, we have eight, eight full-time and one part-time new position requests that are just under half a million dollars. We built in a salary increase of six percent, which is kind of consistent with the state and our neighbors. The lifeguards are going up, but it's going out and operating because we changed that from contractual to employees and the election office has a favor or an increase there too. So, we saved some money with turnover, but basically, we're looking at one point four million in the sal- in new dollars in the salary part of the budget. And the benefits that kind of, you know, follow along with the salary, there's about five hundred and forty-eight thousand there. Most of it's in the pension and the new positions. The allocations, we've got some really big numbers in here. Our agencies are asking for a little over one point three million in new money. The Health Department is formula-driven and we think we're required to do it. So, they are, they do have some suggestions for how we might restructure our funding. Maybe we pay rent for their offices, so perhaps this increase in the allocation could pay for the rent that we're now paying for. So, we'll talk about that when they come in. Upper Chorating is looking for just under two hundred thousand, the library, one hundred and eighty-two.
That's the town, the one in the Galena area? That's rent for that building in Galena, right?
She, she has a lot of requests and the, there's, there's a salary increase in the library, there's, there's mul- there's many factors in there.
They're looking to buy a building, which would mean maintenance and-
No, I mean where you've got highlighted, Town of Galena.
Oh.
Oh, that's the, that's the twenty thousand for the, uh-
The walking path.
The walking path, I think.
That's for the design of all three legs of the walking path.
They'd like us to match those dollars. So, we're gonna, when we go through the allocations, we'll, we'll talk about all those requests more in depth. And in the allocation section of those binders that you have is every request from every agency. It's indexed, if you wanna read them, you're, you're more than happy to. On the operating side, the largest increase, and if you remember from Ward's presentation, is the detention center. It's the, the mental health and health contract going up really significantly. And the second largest area of increase was in human resources and that was for a study and that was the largest part of that. So, again, we'll, we'll get into these in a lot more detail, but there's half a million dollars in total in new requests in the operating section of the budget. Capital, departments are requesting a little bit over two point five million. This just gives you a real overview, most of the capital is in public works as it usually is and the majority of it is in roads. And that does include the resurfacing, so that usually is our largest, largest section in the budget. Our leased vehicles, we have fourteen vehicles in the budget this year. We have, most of them are in public safety, there's seven in the sheriff's office and a couple others sprinkled around. That's about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. And the transfers to other funds, we have some increases and some decreases, so altogether, it's about a hundred and thirty-two thousand in money. So, when we sum that all up, and I guess Ronnie, you're used to seeing this schedule, but I know it's new, it's in the other two of you. This schedule attempts to project what our fund balance is gonna be and segregate it into what is non-recurring versus recurring revenue streams. So, in the FY twenty-three projection, our beginning fund balance, when we entered FY twenty-three, was just a little over nine million dollars. It was nine point two five three. This year, with those numbers that we just went through, we're projecting a deficit of a little under two point three million. So, we're gonna have an ending fund balance of just under seven million dollars in FY twenty-three, that's our projection. It's about thirteen percent of our general fund expenses. We usually shoot for a target of seven and a half. So, you can see that target number is about three million nine, which is what we would wanna keep in, in our reserves and not spend. So, that leaves us an available balance of a little over three million dollars, so.
I'm gonna be a real pain to you because I want you to repeat that again. I, I'm not following that about the fund balance, what?
So, when we end FY twenty-three, we always look to see where we think we're gonna end up. We're gonna end up the year our, with a, a total fund balance, that's six million nine sixty-five number. That's what our total fund balance will be. We usually like to keep seven and a half percent of it. So, if we were, out of that six million nine sixty-five, if we were gonna keep seven and a, seven point five percent and not touch it, hold it in reserves, it would leave us seven million oh seventy-one that we could use in the FY twenty-four budget for non-recurring items. It's a one-time source of money, but we're projecting that we're gonna have that money available for capital.
Seven million dollars.
Three, three million.
Three million.
The number on the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, the available fund balance.
Okay.
Okay, so, if we roll forward over to the FY twenty-four budget and look at it, so we take that six point nine million and we say that's our beginning balance in FY twenty-four. Right now, as the budget sits, it's a deficit of nine million seven, which we know it's not gonna, it can't stay that way. But right now, the requests for, for funding exceed the revenues by, by nine million seven. So, if that were to happen, if we were to fund everything, we would have a negative fund balance of, of two point seven million. And we need to keep four point nine million if we wanted to keep that seven and a half. So, we're seven point seven million short as we start the budget process. I don't know if I've told it to you.
I understand it better than I did the first time, just thank you.
All right, and so, when we go and look at this, we try and see where we need to reduce the budget. So, when we look at this, the revenues, the fund balance and the lease proceeds are one-time money, they're non-recurring. That's that money from last year that we're carrying over and the lease proceeds for the vehicles, which are capital. And then we kind of look at the expenses that we need to pay for out of that one-time money. We have the transfer to water waste, water services, capital projects. We have the tours program and that dollar figure you may recognize from FY twenty-three. We really didn't, we don't need to pay it until twenty-four, so it's just shifting over. Kent Center is asking for housing reservation, or renovations. The capital expenditures could come out of this one-time pot and the leased vehicles and the capital projects.
That does, I, that eight hundred and thirty-three thousand for that lease and that's, that's the leasing of those vehicles.
Right.
Which is, which is a big number.
But this seven thirty-five is, so, with the, with the vehicles, we borrow, the lease really is, we borrow the money and that shows us the revenue, that's seven thirty-five. And the difference between the seven thirty-five and the eight thirty-three in expense is the equipment we have to put into the vehicles, we don't lease that. So, like sheriff's office is where most of it goes. So, there's about, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars of equipment that goes into the cars. So, the revenue and the expense almost wash each other out except for the capital that we have to put into the cars. And the real expense to the county is in debt service because we have to make the lease payments. So, while it, it shows in here as a revenue and an expense, it's virtually a wash except for that hundred thousand dollars of equipment.
And we've been in this lease business for-
I think this is the fifth year, or twenty-four will be the fifth year.
Because, I mean, we're, we're probably getting to the point where somebody can, should be able to take a look at this sometime and determine whether it's the way we wanna go or do we wanna do what we used to do.
And I think you asked to speak with them and so we can have them come in and, and talk to us about how we, how we stand in comparison to where we thought we'd be.
I'm just curious, we, you know, if one of these days we can look and decide whether that was a good option, a good investment in that thing. I mean, you can look at the fleet and we're obviously seeing newer equipment people are riding around in.
And we're saving on maintenance.
Yeah, uh-huh.
And, and one thing that we can't really quantify is we're probably also saving on some accidents because of the liability and the improved safety equipment. Backup cameras.
I found it pretty interesting when Mike was there, he said we have a hundred and thirty-six county earned vehicles, county leased vehicles.
I think that's the total, leased and purchased.
Yeah, that seems like a pretty high number.
We, we have lists by department if you're interested in-
We can get you right down if you wanna say it.
And I, well, that-
I'd like to see it at some point.
That doesn't count the snowplows.
Right, that wasn't the large equipment, that was just-
Right, not the large equipment, that's just smaller vehicles.
Pickup trucks.
Cars and pickup trucks.
So, I guess the big takeaway from this is-
I'd also like, at some point, on the, on, on, on these leased vehicles, some of them sit a lot. And some of them are needed, and maybe some of them aren't. So, I'd like, I'd like to see what the mileage is on these vehicles that are already two or three years old. Because I know of one agency that there's some nice vehicles sitting a lot. And, and if they're not being utilized, then I think that that's, it would be responsible if we didn't at least look at it.
Correct, absolutely. And one thing that you're probably not gonna see is, what we've done is we've required, in our personnel manual, we've required that if there is a car available, that the county staff person use that car. And if they choose to use their own car, they will not be reimbursed POV miles. So, where in the past, if they chose to use their own vehicle, they would be reimbursed POV miles. Now, we have enough county cars, even if we have a meeting, for example, the Jeep that the Commissioner's Office is in charge of, six different departments share that one vehicle. And if two different departments need that vehicle on a given day, we encourage them to find another vehicle that's not being used that day instead of being reimbursed POV miles. So, we've really changed the, the policy on that. We'll definitely have a savings there.
But we'll get to that information for you. So, the big takeaway from this is that in the capital and, and we would need to take out a million four hundred and fifty thousand to balance the budget. And then in the recurring, and the recurring is personnel, operating, allocations, border vet, other and transfers, we would need to take, we need to take six, almost six point three million out of that side of the budget. So, the whole point of this exercise is to kind of focus where we need to cut. So, the part that we're gonna look at today, I guess we're gonna start with capital. We really need to take a million four fifty out of that section of the budget to try and head towards balancing this.
Why don't we do that now?
That's now, in a nutshell.
And get that piece. We know where, we know where we've gotta end up, right? At a million four hundred and fifty.
That's our target, okay. So, you can follow along or in your binders, there's a capital section. And you can either look at it there or on the screen, some of these schedules can be more- All right, so this-
If you want me to look up there, you better make it thicker than that.
Well, we're gonna make it thicker, so. All this really is, is a total by department and we're gonna look at each department. So, why don't we just go to the, we'll go to the, to the department ones because they're easier to read.
Capital.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're on, we would start on page four if you wanna start to look at the department by department. And most of the, as you said, most of this capital is gonna be in public works. So, in the county Commissioner's Office on page four, there's a vehicle in here to replace, I think a Jeep.
The Jeep.
So, there's thirty-three thousand there. And I can just kinda-
So, I have a question.
Okay.
What's being proposed is the two thousand twenty-four Ford Explorer. And in the conversation that we had here with, with Sheriff Hickman and Mike, the Chevy Tahoe is, is cheaper to lease.
Keep in mind that this-
And has a better resale value.
Right, this is just a placeholder, so we got quotes in, we can decide which specific vehicle we want, you know, later. But right now, it's simply a, we, what we said is, we have a Jeep. What is that thing, Cherokee?
Patriot, Patriot.
Patriot, we have a Jeep Patriot, give us something similar and this is what was plugged in. That doesn't mean that that's necessarily gonna be the vehicle we get.
The pricing to the Tahoe is probably comparable, so we may wanna look at that when we get closer. We can swap out the vehicles, but the dollars.
I just wanted to mention because if I, if I understood it correctly.
Yeah, the fuel is not safe.
We talked about the few miles, Dennis actually looked at that because he was concerned about the size of the Explorer versus with, with all that equipment.
In the Commissioner's Office, it won't get nearly the miles that you, you know, the sheriff's office puts on it, so. So, we can look at that. We really literally got these numbers between last Tuesday and this Tuesday, so we haven't had a whole lot of time to, to vet through them, but yeah, you're, you're correct.
And the Jeep Cherokee that we had, Jeep Cherokee?
Patriot.
Patriot, how many miles are on it now, do we know?
I don't remember.
That's, that's, that's the part that causes us a little bit, or, I don't wanna say heartburn, but it's, it's a part that you really don't know. I mean, that, that, that Jeep that we've drove to, I mean, that's a nice running. I never had any trouble.
It runs pretty good.
It runs, yes, it has, you ought to know.
And, and we, we can keep-
Especially now, it's blowing out.
We can keep something in our fleet and just, I mean, what, what we're doing is, we're basically at the end of the cycle, swapping out the oldest of our vehicles. Because in the first couple of years, it was the low hanging fruit, the, the really old or the really high miles, get rid of all those.
I guess my thing is, it would be a whole, it would be a no-brainer to me to get rid, to just take that out of the budget because we've got much more important stuff we're gonna have to debate over and-
Yeah, the only thing to remember though is that by recycling these vehicles, we sell them. So, a huge part of the, of the savings in this program is that we sell these vehicles at the point in their life when we can get a significant amount of money for them.
And I understand that argument, it's just hard for us sitting here to see that when, when, when we were in such a hole.
We have all this, all this financial stuff that we're facing this year. I mean, you know, I, it's like, and I'm jumping ahead here a little bit. Because of where I come from, the sheriff's office has seven vehicles that they're asking for because they were told by Mike that they, they have two Chevy Tahos right now that each have eighty thousand miles on them. Dennis feels, and I know myself, Dennis, our sheriff, feels that he sees no need to replace those vehicles now. That he could get another year out of those vehicles, which cuts his request back to five. You know, I'm, I don't know, now, yes.
We may lose money if we don't.
Well, we, we might, but you know, when those-
So, we need to look at it.
But when those vehicles are done anyhow, if anybody buys them, they've had hard use.
But we can look at the numbers because the resale value is part of the equation and while, you know, you can be used to looking at the expense side, that revenue part of it was the real reason that this was a good venture for us, so.
I guess an easier way to explain that to me would be, if this thirty-three thousand is what we're gonna pay for this new vehicle, what are we getting for the old one when we sell it?
So, we're still selling vehicles that aren't leased. So, like, I think we still have some of our, but once we got past the five years, then we were gonna be into a recurring cycle of selling the leased vehicles, which should only be five years old. So, right now, we're still selling vehicles that are more than five years old. But this should be the last year literally of that. So, I think Enterprise, they did a good presentation if I-
Because we skipped a year.
Skip to year the year I shared with them.
So, we're, we're, we're on year four, okay.
So-
There was one year we didn't lease anything.
We got four for your, for the sheriff's department because of various things.
They were shot, yeah. Do we know what the mileage is on that Jeep?
Can you get to it?
We have, we keep a list, and so we can get that to you.
So, I think, I think maybe for next week, maybe we should bring in, if there's any other information, but we can, there's a lease schedule and we can add mileage to it on the trade-in vehicles. And, you know, it might be good to have Mike in for that conversation when we talk about it in the workshop. So, maybe we should just gather that information.
This might be the best program that we've, that we're, that we belong to. But sitting here with a deficit that we have and knowing we've got a pretty damn good fleet under us, when you're talking seven hundred thousand dollars or something, it's just a big number and it's hard to, it's hard to see the savings or, or whatever.
Yeah, the whole, the whole point was-
Not that it's not there, it's just-
But I think we need to look at it, absolutely, but why don't we move on, I guess?
Yeah, sure.
For sake of expediency and, and we'll go back to that.
Yeah, the whole point was to get all of our vehicles into this program. But if we choose to not get, replace some of them and we put it off, I mean, that, it's not gonna hurt us. It, Pat's right, the, the trade-in value decreases, but it just gets one less vehicle into the cycle.
So, we'd have to look at it, um, okay, so, can you move along?
Well, I think we're safe to take, can we just take this one out? Just, there'll be a start on it or not?
Sure, I mean, do you wanna look at all of the, it might make sense to look at all of the leased vehicles together to figure out which ones that you wanna take out? But we can certainly take this one out.
I mean, I don't know, it's up to my partners here, but it's just, I, I do know that the one we've used is, like I said, it's just the fact that we're sitting here with a big deficit we gotta take care of and-
I mean, I, I drive the Jeep, the, I would say probably the biggest irritant I have is it doesn't have a backup camera. And that's one of the, you know, safety. But, I mean, all things considered, I mean, I don't have a problem with the Jeep or, and it doesn't have a tremendous amount of miles on it. If we push that one out of the cycle, we push that one out of the cycle.
So, so Sandra graciously ran outside and it has forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty miles on it.
I would keep it.
All right, so let's, let's-
Take it out?
Yeah, let's take it out.
Yeah, take that one.
All right, okay, so then next we have a big request from the finance office.
Did you buy your shredder?
Uh, yeah, we did, we have it, we can't move without a shredder.
Phew. That was, that was hot, that was a big, important topic.
Um, yeah, we, we have to shred. So in our office, we're actually looking, um, all of my staff spends all their time looking at computer monitors. Um, we'd really like to get some larger ones if there's, if it's in any way possible this year.
I can, it's up to me, I could turn the page, that's a very modest request.
Well, one of the things that you can consider is, we can have IT look at, um, we've had a, a number of people ask for larger monitors, we can see if there's.
Just, just to save time, I, uh, that's a whole department there, a request of twenty-five hundred dollars. I think we, we need to go through and get the big stuff and bypass this.
I'm wondering.
Push comes to shove, then we have to come back and revisit this.
Sure, maybe some of this could be purchased with contingency this year, like, these are timing.
And, and look, we always say, if you've got money left in your budget.
Then.
Use it now.
Right.
Buy some, as much of this as you can.
So is, is that the mess, officially the message at this point?
I think so, but, I mean, if, if they, instead of this being in their budget, if Pat's got, I don't know whether you do, and maybe you don't.
I'm going to look.
If you've got money left over, use it on buying this little stuff and let us try to catch up with the big items.
Okay, all right, so on page eight, um, there's eighty-five thousand on page eight. Again, Scott spoke to us of this, it's, um, most of it has to do with cybersecurity. Page eight.
Yeah, eighty-five, that right here.
Oh, eight, I thought you said eighty.
Yeah, I've got it up on the screen.
I thought you said eighty.
I'm sorry, page number was a little small. So I think that, you know, a lot of this is related to cybersecurity, I'm not sure how you feel about trimming any of that back.
The switches were simply.
It's a hundred and fifteen thousand this year, right?
Um, the thirty thousand is a number that we put in every year or two for when we have to do the next computer upgrade, so that we don't have to buy it all at once. So every, that thirty thousand, um, the eighty-five at top, on the top are the special items for this year, and then we fund thirty thousand into our computers every year, so we don't have a big, I think every four or five years, you, they do a refresh.
The problem with, with me now is I don't know what's important and what ain't, and I, it is, the whole world revolves around computers. I would be hesitant to say no to any of this, and then it'd come back to haunt us.
That's, I was just getting ready to say, I, I don't know that I'm educated enough to be able to say.
With cybersecurity, you know, we're getting more and more oversight with the state. I, I, I would recommend you keep that in, yeah.
Either that, or maybe, maybe ask Scott to prioritize.
They are.
It is prioritized.
Oh, it is?
Everything that you're looking at, priority order.
Okay, so, all right, so it is prioritized, okay.
So the forty-nine thousand is his, his.
Number one top priority.
The light switches on is number two, and the firewall is number three. We always ask them to do that, so that if you, you were to remove something, go from the bottom up.
Okay, well, I see that, okay.
Okay, so then if you go to page fifteen, we can look at roads, which is where a huge amount of dollars on. So we started at the top. We've got bridge repairs and design, K one and K two, Jeannie, do you ever remember where those are?
That, those are the twin bridges, aren't they?
Twin bridges?
On Langford Road. I'm very familiar with them.
They're completed, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at twenty-three. The column for twenty-three shows what we spent, twenty-four is what's asked for. So he's looking for, um, one standard cab dump truck for a hundred and eighty thousand. We've got the Clark Road pipe project for two hundred and fifty. We've got the paving in there, um, Porter's Grove, Grove, Shadon Reach, and Handy Point for three hundred.
Oh, I think those are last year's.
Oh, they are.
Those are, and I may not have a current list from them.
Yeah, I was going to say, Porter's Grove was done last year.
He put it in as well.
Just happens. Little ironic.
Okay, so we can get to the name, and then the service.
No one picked up on that.
No, I bet not.
Jeannie has it for the paving.
Tolchester Beach Road, Camp Road, Davies Hill Road, Mill Lane, Lee Avenue. They're about three pages behind here, somewhere in the, in the paving project. Item number five, and it says it with the rose on.
Yeah, page one.
There we go.
What page number were we?
Twenty. And then the other asks are a tractor with a boom for two hundred and ten, and then the Village of Kennedyville storm order and roadway improvements for a hundred and fifty. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six items that make up that million and a half dollars that they're asking for.
Are we trading in a dump truck?
I think it's pretty much at the end of its life, if I'm not mistaken, it's really, really old. Um, page seventeen. You know what, this one was approved last year.
That's, yeah, I was just going to say.
And it just didn't arrive this year.
It's taking eighteen months or more to get a dump truck. So actually, we're not going to pay for twenty-three's dump truck until twenty-four, and the same thing, anything they order for twenty-four is intended to be paid till twenty-five. We're hoping to catch up at some point in the near future, and then we would have two dump trucks in one year. But, so basically, twenty-four's dump truck is, we're still waiting for it to be delivered for twenty-three.
But this one's already been approved.
Yeah. It just won't get paid for until, we did the same thing last year.
It's like in twenty-five, they're expecting, we'll play catch up.
Yeah. If, if supply changes.
So what they're asking for really isn't the one-eighty, the one-eighty was already approved last year in FY twenty-three. What they're asking for is approval to go ahead and order the FY twenty-four one, which would arrive in twenty-five.
Another question, Tolchester Beach Road, is that back in the estates?
That's the main rotation down to Goodmore.
Well, that's paved.
I thought that was.
That's paved.
And I thought that was, uh, I thought that was estate highway.
The estate highway goes down their ways, because it does.
That's three twenty-one.
If it, if it's got a number on it, it's not ours. So at whatever point it, it's no longer state.
Oh, that's three twenty-one, so you get, I don't know how far, whether it changed.
I would say around the intersection or just past the intersection, it might cut off.
It says in-state maintenance right there somewhere.
Yep.
What, like in front of the Nike site where the Ag Center is?
Just pass, pass the Ag Center, I think it's something.
Well, I'm not sure, which of these six you want to. I guess if we can maybe stick with the dump truck for a minute, do you want to, do you want to, and then have them start the process for them that's going to come next year? Or do you want to, that won't help us with twenty-four, but.
They're basically asking for approval to receive one in twenty-five. I know.
Can we, can we get three twenty-four before we say yes?
Thank you pandemic. It's my understanding that the chips and all of the backlog of this is going to break loose in about six, six to eight months.
The three hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the, uh, the, uh, the road, that's tar and chi, or paving, whatever, tar and chipping, I guess, is, because you had the last year's roads, is the number still the same?
The number's right, it's, um, yeah.
It's the, it's the, okay.
And Shelley, if you've looked in the, the detail in your binder, it has a breakdown by road, if you want us, if you want to do a pause by road, we can give that to you.
Well, okay.
But this is where a, a large chunk of the capital is here, and this million and a half dollars and these six others.
The Clark Road pipe project, and I know we heard Mike talk about it, and I know where it's at. Is this, short of it needing to be done, this is not impacting anyone's front yard, backyard, it's never.
I think it is.
There was one fella coming here and complained about that, but.
And we started it in twenty-three, so it's kind of in the, it's, if you look, we spent about seventeen thousand on it, but they have started the project. So they have to, they have to stop.
It's a good budget for twenty-three, it's just taking more time. I think much of the mission, some property damage that's had occurred and is due to occur without the state just.
So basically, you've got a dump truck of four hundred and eighty thousand that was ordered last year that we haven't received yet. We got the Clark Road project that was approved last year and is not completed yet.
So we're expecting a dump truck from last?
It was ordered in last year.
We're expecting a dump truck to arrive finally.
The amounts are in the high range, Shelley.
I've got, so in the paving projects, Tolchester Beach Road is one sixty-five six, one six, one hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred. Camp Road is forty-one thousand six hundred. Davies Hill Road is one hundred thousand, and Mill Lane and Lee Avenue together are sixty-one thousand four hundred.
I think I'd take the dump truck out and let.
Well, that's already been ordered.
So this one in this budget has already been ordered.
One for twenty-five. We can, yeah, if we take it out, it'll be the one for twenty-five.
Which doesn't help us this year.
But he's going to order it if we don't tell him not to, and it will be, we'll be in the same spot in twenty-five.
Yeah, my, 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 my vote is with Ronnie, that, don't take it out.
One of the things, you know, we certainly didn't put much strain on them in the snow this year.
True, sir.
That, that, that was, we didn't have that issue, and.
For two years now.
Right.
Absolutely, our winters ain't been nothing like what they have been, and we don't use them all at one time. I mean, when the boys are on the road, you don't use all them dump trucks, so I, I'm not, I might even make an argument that maybe we have one or two too many. I mean, because the only time we use them all at one time is snow removal.
Correct.
And we, we always have the opportunity to contract down too.
Shit, we can, we can go rent one from Dave Bramble, we get a jam, or one of these other boys that's doing the work. I, I, with the numbers we're dealing with, I think we have much, don't have much choice but to take it out.
Correct.
We can take out the one for twenty-five, but the one for twenty-four has already been ordered.
So that don't help us for this year.
But it'll, it'll help us from being in the same situation in twenty-five, that we committed to a hundred and eighty at the beginning.
Next year, right.
Well, I still think we ought to do it.
All right, so then.
I mean, I, we're, we're sitting here, and I, I'm not even sure how many dump trucks we got altogether, to tell you the truth, there's snow plows, but it's.
He says twelve.
Twelve, that's probably right.
And with paving, I mean, that, there sure is nice when we pave a road, but it's paving. It's sure nice when we pave a road, but do, do we need all those? These are the recommendations from roads, but it's up to you as to whether or not we move forward.
The next truck that they're looking to replace is a two thousand and two, dump truck with two hundred and seventy thousand miles on it, eighteen thousand hours on it.
But we could take down, I mean, they've prioritized those roads, and, I mean, we got to start taking something out of here.
You got to start something, I know.
I would take the bottom one or two roads out.
Okay, so, um, take my road out.
Is one of these two roads?
Oh, for the paving, yeah, I, I thought you meant the snow removal.
Then you can't get to work. Then you won't be able to come to work.
Okay, so we're going to take out, um, Mill. Mill Lane and Lee Avenue, what's that one, Shelley?
Mill Lane and Lee Avenue is sixty-one thousand four hundred.
And what was the next one up?
Davies Hill Road, one hundred thousand.
You want to take that one too?
I don't know, we'll hear from my colleagues, I, I know we got to take something out somewhere.
Mill Lane and Lee Avenue, sixty-one four.
If they're not in terrible shape, I mean, none of us have been there to see it, I don't know that our roads are in all light bad shape, but, uh, we don't want to give up.
It's one sixty-five six.
Uh, there's a rotation that we're doing, I, I, I understand that, but.
Yeah, they, they like to do about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in paving.
Well, and we're talking about paving as opposed to resurfacing with tar and chip.
Correct, that's the next one down.
So, and, you know, they have in three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the, in the tar chip, and they don't identify the roads for that, so.
I think they may have in the, um, on the next page. Um, let's see. So we've got them all prioritized. So, yeah, I think, you know, Club Road, Club Terrace, Marina Star Road, Shuner Road, Skipjack Road, Spinnaker Road, Os, Owasso Road? Bunting Road.
That's all on Chesapeake Land.
Chesapeake Land and all of them.
Of course.
All of those are.
Yes, the made up name area, yeah. Bunting Road, Crane Road, Fermoy Road, Glenola Road. These are all your neighbors. I say they're made up words, I, I know they're Indian names, but. By Rio?
Now, these are all tar and chip you're talking about, these are the ones you're tracking.
Yep, yep, By Rio, Y, Wallace Woods, Needham, Hackett, Boyer, Beaver, Fox Chase, Riley Snack.
Well, could we, I mean, I know this is maybe not, and I'm just throwing this out there, could we?
You could, you could cut it in half, and let the roads determine.
Well, I know we could do whatever, but I'm just, could we tar and chip these roads as opposed to pave them if they're, if they're in desperate need of?
I think their argument is, is they don't want to take a paved road and tar and chip it, so I don't.
No, no, and I don't think any of these are paved.
Right, and that's.
No, no, these are not paved.
Yes, that's been done in the budget process before.
Camper, I know Davies Hill Road is not paved. And I don't think Tolchester Beach Road is paved from where we take maintenance, I don't think, I don't, I can't say it. I mean, I'm just, I'm like.
Yes, that, that has been done in the past.
One thing they try to do is, some of these roads where you like, you tar and chip them, and they, and they get ruts and, and out of bounds, and every time you tar and chip them, it, that, none of that comes out much. So they try to pave them every once in a while, but the, you can tar and chip a road like you're looking at for pennies on the dollar, what blacktoppen costs you. Why don't we just take one or two of the roads out of the three hundred and six, out of the paving, just knock one or two off the bottom. We won't have, we don't have to deplete the whole thing, but.
You're talk, you're talking about the paving, so if, so there's five roads listed, but the bottom one has two roads. So if you were to knock off the bottom two listed, I'm guessing Mill Lane and Lee Ave are close? Are they close together, or are they just so small they got lumped together?
I don't know, the answer to that.
They're tiny, apparently.
Yeah, they're very small.
But if you were to take off the bottom two lines, it would be a hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred.
That's what you would take away? Let's put them up, put them up to the top of next year's list.
What's the third one from the bottom up?
Camp Road, Sheriff.
Camp Road, I'm not sure.
That's one goes to the, uh, Elks Lodge, isn't it?
No, it's the dead end road prior to the Elks Lodge, if you're coming from Chesapeake Town.
Oh, okay.
It's where the development is back.
The valley, yeah, it's dead end, and you don't get out of it once you go down Camp Road, it's dead end, it's just prior to the Elks.
And how much is that one?
Forty-one thousand six hundred. Now, one thing you guys could do is, you, you could simply say, you know, we're, we're going to keep this, this amount in, and then let roads prioritize which they think are the, the worst. So if they think that these three, for example, are, are in way worse shape than Tolchester Beach Road, you know, you don't necessarily have to approve it by road. And the same thing with the paving, you could say, I want to see that taken down to two hundred thousand. You, you don't have to, like, identify roads, and then let them.
The tar chip, you can, we can just knock the money off of that, and then figure it out, I mean, like.
That's a good idea, but I'm not a road guy.
I think that's a great idea.
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is budgeted for tar and chipping, how about if we say we'd ma, make it two fifty?
I, I agree, yep, I like that idea.
Tar and chip two fifty, and.
Correct, and the other one would be.
A hundred or a hundred and fifty away from that.
You take the bottom two, it's a hundred and sixty-one, and honestly, if they wanted to restructure it, you could let them.
All you're doing is putting it off for another year, they'll be at the top of the list next year.
Yep.
Well, let's, yeah, let's.
I'm going to think we ought to ask them to take two hundred thousand.
Okay.
I agree, I think two hundred thousand there, or just let them.
Two hundred thousand out of, out of, out of the paving.
Sounds good to me.
And let them decide which ones need the.
Correct, yes.
So two hundred thousand out of the paving, and we're going to leave two fifty in the service treatment?
That's what I got.
So we've taken out a hundred and ten, okay. All right, um, the next item down there is a tractor with a boom. He, and again, um, this is fairly low on his list of priorities.
And if I remember right, this would be to give us an extra one so that we have more than one, so we've been.
That's what it says here.
Yep, we've been operating with one, but this would give us two for when one. Yep, we've been operating with one, but this would give us two for when one needs maintenance or-
I think we revisit that next year.
I agree.
Right, and the last item on here is the-
I mean, they're, they're using one now, making, you know, they're making it work. I understand there might be a maintenance issue, but that's, that's two hundred and ten thousand there.
And then the last item in roads is the Village of Kennedy, those are water and roadway improvements. Detail on that on page twenty-four.
And this is something the previous board had a discussion with residents.
They come with these, it's supposed to, the main thing was, and it doesn't say it here, but I guess it's under roadway improvements, that there was supposed to be two or three streetlights, three or four streetlights, and to light up the intersections.
And we're still looking for the street dedication before we could move forward with that. This is an orphaned development. The first developer went belly up, second developer handed it back to us and said, here, you take it then. So there's still a lot of roadway improvements, water, sewer, it's sidewalks, and one of the issues that they have is there was supposed to be streetlights, as Ronnie said. And so as soon as we get those, the streets dedicated, some of these streets are still owned by the first developer, the one that went bankrupt. So we've gotta get the court to go in and say that we are now the owner of that, since we're the owner of the development. And as soon as that happens, we can do some of those pro- projects.
If that's, if none of this can move forward until that's done, then we can take that hundred and fifty out of there until we get it straight.
I think you're right. Well, improvement stormwater drainage, it's possible we could do something with that. I guess the pond needs to be cleared out or cleaned out or-
I don't, I don't, I don't think that ponds, I was, we were down there looking, I didn't see where that pond-
Okay. After, after we get the-
I'm gonna rely on, on Ronnie on this one, because he's had previous conversations.
I would just take, I would take that out, and then I would notify Tom Yeager or whoever's gonna do it to get those roads straight, and then we'll consider it.
Tom's working on it, it's on his list of priority, it's on his top three priorities right now, and as soon as we get that straightened out, we, we can have, we can come back in and ask for contingency for whichever piece of this should move forward first.
By the way, so we have this in the back of our minds, how much have we got left in contingency? Two or three hundred thousand?
It's, I think it's two something.
Two something, I believe, too.
But I can tell you in just a second.
I thought you were gonna ask how much you took out, so we just took out six hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah. And I tell you, I drive downtown Tolchester all the time, and I didn't know we had, but I don't see any big problems with roads down there, and I think our roads are really in pretty decent shape. We haven't had real bad winters to tear them up, so I don't-
The last two items on there have to do with the Lamson Forest Bridge, the road bridge, um, and there's state funding available for those, if you see the, the thumbnail on the bottom of that page. So our share is two hundred and twenty thousand. But the project is, um, under the floor.
And that has been identified by the state as needing repairs. They do bridge inspections from time to time. Oh, you got it, you're quicker than I am. Oh.
So we are leveraging quite a bit of money for that project.
So we have about two hundred thousand in contingency right now for FY twenty-three.
To last us till first year off.
Yep. So if there's low hanging fruit here, that, the, the, like, for example, if Pat's folks can't absorb those monitors, we can have Scott's crew come in and say, hey, can we buy forty new monitors?
Where's Lamson Forest Bridge?
It's up, um, between Chesterville and Lena.
Yep.
Well, with something like that, I mean, we're almost, I mean, the, the, the state or the feds are doing the lion's share of that, and if we don't take advantage of it, we may not make-
We're, we're on the list right now to get it, so if we had to start over and get on a new list-
And that's number three on his priorities, so.
I, I would be afraid of not doing that.
Yeah, because there's the consequences or ones we don't wanna have to deal with, if it was to fall in or something.
Correct, right.
Taking that, not, not tar and chipping a road, we can, we can live with somebody hitting a pot hole, but this is-
So I'd also be worried on that.
Yep, yep.
Alright, we got a long ways to go, but we're getting there.
So then on, on page twenty-six is environmental operations, which is one of the next largest departments, and it's really just, just one item. He's looking for a roll-off truck with a waste system for seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's on page twenty-six.
And that's replacing a two thousand and four Peterbilt with over five hundred thousand miles.
Is this gonna be another one of these vehicles that they order, and we won't see it until twenty twenty-five probably?
It might be.
I don't know the answer to that, unfortunately. If it needs it in twenty-four, it will need it in twenty-five. I guess the question is, do we need it, I, you know, if there's more information on-
I know there are two of them, and they continually go back and forth to the landfill. I don't know that this one has been, I haven't heard of any. Mike hasn't mentioned to me that this one's been particularly problematic. I think it's just preventative, trying to get ahead of it.
Is there a way to think about the land you order on this too?
Right at the end of the fiscal year.
Next, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big-
I mean, the truck looks like it's just-
I'm not saying they don't need a new truck, but I mean, we could, I mean, who knows, next year may not be any better for us financially.
It might not be.
I mean, that's-
But if he's asking for it this year, what number did he put on it?
Uh, two eighty, I think.
No, I mean, uh, priority.
Oh, number one.
That's the only one on that.
In this division.
Oh, okay. I think we make do with what we got. If it becomes a problem, we'll have to-
Address it.
Well, and here's something else, and, and I know, I mean, this is a, um, it doesn't, it says replace a Peterbilt, but it doesn't say with what, does it?
You mean, the new truck?
Yeah.
Technically, they're, they're, we're supposed to bid it out, so we don't really know what brand we might get.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know.
Well, that's what I was asking. Okay, my, my, my question is, um, you know, Peterbilt is the Cadillac of the big truck world.
Yeah, we, we would always bid that out, and we would never go for a particular brand. In fact, the other one, I believe, is a Volvo, if I'm not mistaken. So the two that we have aren't even-
I mean, reliability, I think, should be our number one.
Yep, yep.
So do these vehicles travel outside of the county?
Yes, this one goes back and forth to Caroline County.
Caroline, picks her dumpsters up here, pulls in dumpsters up on her truck and hauls them to Caroline County.
Which we believe will continue on for an extra twelve years.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
You don't know how much that, that has bothered me for the last fifteen years.
Seriously, especially with all the empty space that they have.
And I'm just hoping that in thirty-two years that there will be another alternative for trash.
I, I think, yeah.
Get on that, Mr. Matthews.
It, it's, it's gonna evolve a lot.
We have always said, and all the boards I've served with, that when it comes up to that landfill, they said, we're just banking on the fact that there will happen, that somebody will be burning it up or-
We're gonna incinerate, we're gonna, yeah.
When it comes their turn.
Right.
And the fact that, was it Caroline's keeping it for an extra twenty years or-
Twelve, twelve times.
That's even makes it better.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Alright, we took that out.
Okay, so then the next department is, um-
Do they probably know how often they, do they go every day?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Probably two or three times a day, sure.
Yeah, they, um, because people drop stuff off, all the household, if you take your, you know, trash out there, it goes into those big containers, and then when it gets full, and they have compressors so that we can compact it down, and then they take it out to Caroline County.
I will say something about that transfer site out there. That's as, when you wanna go get rid of junk, trash, household, that's about as a need to run facility as you ever want to go to, I think. It is a very nicely run, they're very nicely run, and, well, I know we'll talk about this when we get into personnel, but we don't have anybody in charge of that facility right now like we used to with Marty, but it's open.
It's open right now. It's, it's open, it's being advertised, so if you know of anybody, he does public land, or Marty used to do public landings and all the solid waste.
And before I forget it, we, I don't know why we haven't had him in here, but we ought to have him in-
He's on for, I believe, next week.
Okay, good.
So it's, it's being worked on. Um, yeah, they also do the bulk waste. One of the things you guys could consider, I don't know if there's any appetite for this, but the dump tickets are very reasonably priced. We lose money on this operation every year. You could, I mean, we used to do it by weight, we, you know, there's a number of, we have scales out there, but we do lose money on this.
Because we have to pay tipping fees every pound we take to that landfill. We have to pay tipping fees.
May or may not be something you wanna consider, but I felt the need to tell you.
I remember when that dump was run like a boot camp one time, there was a price out there. I mean, like a boot camp, but- I was a boy, he would yell at you, boy, if you put something in the wrong spot.
I worked with him on the road with, and he'd yell at me too. Passing around.
It's like I know that phone.
Alright, so the next one is building maintenance, um, it's on page thirty-one.
Do, can we skip, I, I'd say we get rid of this two point four million dollar thing.
Nicholson.
You skipped right over that.
The water treatment plant.
That was, I was gonna say, we don't do that.
I, I don't think I've any choice in there.
Nope, nope, we're stuck with that one.
I tried.
Moving on to building maintenance. Um, page thirty-one, they really don't have a huge ask in here, it's thirty-eight thousand, um, they wanna replace two HVAC units at the government center. We have forty-two units in total, and so if you look in the five-year plan, they wanna do two every year. Um, the other thing that they have in there is the, um, the courthouse, the condenser, or, yeah, boiler feed tank. They also have a vehicle, so they're replacing a, a one-ton pickup.
Well, we gotta do those HVAC, I, I do know that heating and air conditioning out there, that courthouse is-
These, I think, are at the government center.
The first, the, yeah, the HVAC units are at the government center, that the boiler feed tank replacement is at the courthouse.
Who uses the one-ton pickup? Is that our maintenance department or something?
Yeah.
A one-ton pickup.
We'll bring the whole list in and get it in front of you, and that way you guys can evaluate.
But I'm just wondering, I mean, we're talking about with Bob, Bob, he uses, right?
Probably something like that, yeah. I don't know if it's him or one of his guys.
I was gonna say, I think his is new, so I think it has to be somebody else.
We're not talking about halftime, we're talking about one ton.
The replacement of one, okay, you tell us what, okay.
Replacing with a one-ton, and that's, and that's the list that we got from Enterprise with their pricing.
What page are you on?
She's somewhere else.
So there is a schedule, there's a, there's a tab for leased vehicles here, that is towards the end there, it's the third one from the bottom that lists all the vehicles.
Okay, yep.
It doesn't have all of the information you guys are looking for, but if you wanna look at all of them on one page, it's that leased vehicle tab. So there's fourteen vehicles. They're looking at replacing a two thousand and sixteen Ford F two fifty. With this one ton.
Two fifty's three-quarter ton.
Correct.
I, I, and, and that's, I, I tell you, I see, I learn more about it when I see it show up in each tab, because I think what probably is getting some of our attention is, when you, you know, you're, oh, you're, you're not hauling stuff. You don't need a one-ton if you're, if you're just got toolbox and you're heading to the courthouse or something, and I'm not, is, like, maybe it's-
It might be the same concept as the Tahoe and the Explorer, that it's just as, it's the same price to get a one-ton as a half-ton.
I think so. It ends up, it ends up being cheaper because the resale value, we're getting them at the government rate.
Reset, and that's the part, we, that's the missing part that we don't see, and that's what makes it a little tougher sometimes.
So we can find out who's, you know-
Can we find out, like, the mileage on that vehicle? I mean, I know we're splitting-
Yep, nope, we'll get you all that information. And it's interesting, because in the, the commissioner's office, if you look at the leased tab, the annual payment's nine thousand for the replacement of the Jeep. So you're not, you're not getting thirty-three thousand out of the budget, you'd be getting nine thousand out of the budget.
For trading that one in, it will-
No, 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 just the annual, the annual payment.
It'll, it'll reduce the, it'll reduce the revenue, skip, and the expense by that thirty-three, but the actual decrease in the budget would be that nine.
Nine thousand.
Okay, so, anything in building maintenance, comfortable leaving that there?
I'd like to look further, they, just a little bit deeper into this vehicle, see if we can keep it another year or so, I mean, I just-
We will, we'll bring you all the information you need. We have those lists already available in the county, we just don't have them today. Yep.
Yeah, I'm like, I, I, you know, and I get, I understand the Explorer tire thing, because that's where, or where I came from. But I can't, I have a hard time envisioning that a one-ton truck is needed for building maintenance, especially when they're operating a three-quarter ton now.
Mike can definitely-
But again, I don't know what the difference is in the lease thing, I mean-
Mike can tell you technically what they need, and then he'll also be able to enlighten us on why are we going with the one-ton pickup. I mean, is, is it something that we're putting a snowplow on the front of and plowing parking lots? I don't know, I don't have the answer to that, but he'll be able to talk to that.
A three-quarter ton pickup.
I can tell you that would be, because there's no additional aftermarket equipment, the ones with the additional aftermarket usually have the plow set up.
Okay. But it's stuff like that that Mike could get you.
I would just put a question mark five.
Yeah, I mean, look, in my world, I'm driving a two thousand and eleven, I, I have a two thousand and eleven F three fifty that I've had, I mean, it had sixty thousand miles on it. And this year, I bought a Ford Ranger, because it gets twenty-five miles to the gallon. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe we need to start looking in that direction, if it works, I mean, I, I, you know.
We'll get you all that information, and you can evaluate.
Especially if we're only keeping for five years, I mean.
Okay, so the next department is a really small one, it's on, um, on page, um, thirty-five. And they're looking for three of that cops for the new GIS system that they, they have in their operating budget.
I think we'll just move on from there.
Okay, and-
Well, and they have a leased vehicle, but we can, we can revisit, we can revisit that one as well.
Oh, I do see that.
And, and that's simply, you know, I, I don't have the information, but again, they have a vehicle, it's-
That is, but didn't, didn't Bill also say that he's only asking for one, and there's two over there?
We, we took one out.
Okay, okay.
Um, and-
So where did we, I mean, what did we-
I believe this was code enforcement.
Okay.
I tell you a question you can an, get answered for me from the lease company maybe, what would happen if we just took this year off? And then, I mean, I know we gotta do police cars and stuff, the emergency vehicles, but-
Similar to what we, what happened to us a couple of years ago, when we didn't choose to do the same thing, instead of being on a five-year rotation with a five-year lease on the vehicles, we've now skipped a year. We're gonna overlap at some point, and we're gonna have two years' worth of vehicles to sell and replace, because they're all going to come in at their five years at the same time. And the, the only thing too, I would remember, Ronnie, is that the lease value is a hundred and ninety thousand, so what, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna take the big numbers out of the revenue and out of the expense, but the net savings is the debt service, the lease payment that we make, so for all the vehicles, it's a hundred and ninety thousand. We factor it down, figuring, we know they're not all walking through the door on July one, so we put six months of the cost, some are gonna come in, you know, in August, some are gonna come in in February, so you'd be saving, if you cut the whole program, you'd probably save ninety-five thousand in expense.
Wow, really? Okay, well, see, that's, there's an aspect of this leasing that we don't, we don't see. All I see is thirty-three thousand dollars in the budget, and we're trying to cut a million six out of the, or a million four or something.
But the leased vehicles really don't play into that, because there's a, there's the revenue, the, the lease proceeds, when you borrow the money for the lease, offsets the cost of the vehicle, so it's really just those monthly payments that you're making that fall through to the- so it's really just those monthly payments that you're making that fall through to the bottom.
That's why you're here, Pat.
Alright, so, page thirty-seven is the sheriff's office.
Well, the protective duty vest.
They're rotating.
They're necessary, unfortunately, they're only good for five years, and I know they have a running schedule when they come available, so I don't think we, you know, can even think about that.
Absolutely not.
Then you have laptop and.
I don't think you can.
If you approve the new position, they're gonna need equipment. And then the laptop mounts are for the new vehicles, so.
It's showing six leased vehicles. It says seven.
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 It's supposed to be seven?
It's not seven. Dennis asked for six, the schedule came from Brian, but whatever reason, he said, I'm guessing because of the years of the vehicles that Dennis has left out there.
I, I think Dennis took one off, saying, I don't wanna, you remember that conversation we had when he came in?
It was back before that. I can reach out to Dennis.
Yep.
But I think we need to true it up.
I've had the conversation with him too. The two thousand fourteen Tahoe has, uh, the county has spent money outfitting it recently. And that's why Dennis took it off.
Got it.
It's ten years old.
Yeah, but it's only got eighty thousand miles.
It's not the aftermarket, okay.
I, I'll just put it out there.
Oh, I hear you.
From, in talking with Sheriff Hickman, it's my understanding that he can make do with five.
Okay.
So that got the two of them out, that's, I, I don't know what the annual lease is, but.
So it shows on that schedule, we would take, um, they're one of the higher ticket items, so the lease payments are fifteen thousand, six hundred, so if we take two of them out, it would be thirty thousand dollars a year.
I'll take two.
If it's six months, if they weren't coming until January, then it would be fifteen thousand, but.
Well, see, that creates a problem, because he needs them, because he's in conversations with Dennis. The Dodge Chargers are really dying on them big time, so I suggested to him to give the blessing, if the commissioners all agree, to go ahead and place the order now, so hopefully we'll get them by the fall.
Uh, what I would have him do is bring in the, um, uh, lease documents, or the, the estimates, and at a commissioner's meeting, get approval, because we've done that before, when, with the previous.
Because they definitely won't be here until the next year.
With the previous sheriff.
Previous sheriff used to come in early all the time.
Yep.
I tried not to.
But we're just pushing an average of six months for the entire four, we take them when we can get them.
Right, right, right.
The hope is that we can get the Tahoe sooner than maybe a truck or.
Yeah, some of these other ones, but it all averages out.
Pick a number, we have to pick something.
Well, if we're gonna cut it back to five, then figure on bringing it in before the commissioners will approve it, they can order.
And I think that, you know, honestly, I think in one of the conversations with the sheriff, he said that he didn't accomplish, he wasn't sitting on a lot, that if he really wanted it, he could have had it today, so it's not, it's kind of. But if you bring it in, we can at least start it rolling.
Yep.
I say, I say cut it to five, bring him in, and allow him to go ahead and place the order. If everybody's okay.
Yes, sir.
I absolutely. I'm gonna follow your, 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 on that.
Okay, anything else in the sheriff's office?
Can we cut retirements in it?
No.
No? Okay.
So, page forty-four is the detention center.
Well, we, you know, he also asked for a additional position.
Yes, that's a different day, we'll talk about that a different day.
And we'll talk about all of the personnel.
But I mean, I don't know what that does to his vehicle situation.
Well, I'm sure.
We'll talk about that later too.
Oh, yeah, got it.
Yeah, if, if you approve the position, then we'll, we'll quantify that extra cost for you. Okay, so, page.
Do all the SROs have a vehicle? If they do, I think they just use an older vehicle, right?
That's what we try to do here.
Yeah, okay, so maybe that's, maybe the plan is to take an older vehicle and repurpose it. I, I, Dennis can, Sheriff Hickman can tell us about that.
Okay, alright, and on page forty-four is the detention center.
Do we need to talk about the commercial vehicle, laptops?
What, on the sheriff's office?
Yeah.
They're necessary, aren't they?
They gotta have them, yeah.
That pushed out from the sheriff, it was originally in forty-three, and I don't think they had time to.
They couldn't get them.
Could make the agreement, and so that's been pushed out in twenty-three with the same request. We're putting it up at six vehicles for that. And is it compatible with the state of Maryland software?
And doors and stuff gotta work, so, I would, I've, that's a pretty reasonable request from the detention center.
So those, that one's not doors, that one is software. And that is to manage all the information that they manage for the inmates. The current jail management system, whatever it's called, is on its last legs, and it's not gonna be supported, so if, and, and there's no cloud backup, I believe, so they need something that has backup. Right now, if that goes down, we lose data, significant data.
And pending, I guess, decisions made, I don't know if.
I'm just wondering if there's been any conversation with Penny about grant opportunities for something like this.
I don't know.
For jail management, I would think there would be some federal money or state money out there somewhere.
We can certainly reach out to her and say.
And part of this is for the acquisition, and part of it is for the maintenance and support, which is fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
The acquisition for maintenance and support is in operating.
Is in operating. So acquisition, was it all in one fels, just in one year, do you remember? Okay.
And then look for fourteen thousand dollars a year for annual maintenance and support, which is operating.
In, in operating, yeah, okay.
The homeland security money, it comes through a grant, what's the overall on that each year?
I think it varies.
It's about, it's in the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range usually, almost like some of the high two hundreds, usually like two thirty, two sixty.
Does the detention center get some of that?
I don't think they traditionally have, but isn't some of that for sal, specifically earmarked for salaries? Because I'm thinking that the equipment piece of it's usually like thirty or forty thousand.
The equipment piece is small, it's, the sour piece is the largest.
The sheriff's office used to get about twenty-some thousand.
Correct, yeah. I don't think the detention center usually participates in that, I think there's require, I'm not sure what the requirements are, but we can find out.
It might be something to ask Penny about.
Yep.
Or we will reach out to her about that.
To help pay for this jail systems, to see if.
See if it qualifies.
At least a portion of it, maybe.
Yeah, I know it's very specific what it can pay for, so I don't know if this will qualify or not, and or if there's another grant that potentially could, it's a good.
There's another leased vehicle in here also, so, we'll talk about that when we get to the main.
Yep.
Um, emergency medical services is on page forty-seven.
Where did you see the leased vehicle?
Uh, no, on the detention center, page forty-four, they have a new.
They're leased vehicle.
Yeah.
The reality is that Kenny did not need to the detention center at this time to make it into fourteen, and we will focus on that. Be adjusted however you'd like. You probably need to look at all of them, just. We'll get you the mileage.
We'll, we'll get you all that information.
We'll get you all that stats, and then you can just.
And that will include, that will help with the justification of them, whether it passes or not.
I want to be fair, but I mean, it, when I see vehicles that sit for a long time.
If you see a vehicle that sits for a long time, they need to be discussed.
That's, that means a problem.
And like I said, six departments here in this building share one vehicle. So if there's a, a vehicle that's just sitting, and they, and there's a justification for why we need that vehicle, it's possible that it could be shared with another department to fulfill both needs.
That, and the fact that we have a declining, which is a good thing, I guess, detention center population.
Absolutely.
Is it really necessary? Is it something to live without for this year?
Life path heart monitors.
I ain't taking neither one of them out.
We might need.
You were, you were right.
Need them right here.
And then there's another vehicle in here, Chevy Tahoe, so we can, we can look at that one with the. Propagations is on page fifteen. There's really just a couple of safety, you know, radios, batteries, and accessories in here, so I don't think there's probably anything that's gonna do with that.
This is, isn't, the sixteen thousand is, right, just the regular ongoing, the four hundred thousand is the battery, is our backup system, right?
Right, and that's seventy, that's twenty-five.
And I think that we've, we've, oh, you're right, it's twenty-twenty-five, sorry, I was misreading that, I think we've pushed that a couple times, as it is, haven't we?
And then if they were supposed to do another, yeah, or options, so they.
Yeah. Okay, so, we, that doesn't need to be, that's next year.
So that four hundred thousand, just, I, I know it's FY twenty-five, but what does that do again?
I think it, I think it is an upgrade slash, uh, new system for the backup system.
Out of public work.
Correct.
Um, page fifty-two is parks and recreation, a hundred and three thousand.
Um, we don't even have anybody to run the concession saying, correct?
Right, that, right, correct. Sometimes we have other people come in, other vendors, um, and right now, we're kind of hoping we can get a food truck in, um, but we don't know if they're gonna need storage for frozen things, it's a good question.
I'd say, for now, we just, I mean, my opinion is, for now, we don't have anybody to run it, we don't have a concession, we don't have a food truck, I don't see why we need a freezer to purchase rate at this moment.
And if our current freezer goes up, we could certainly come in with a contingency request.
The current freezer has gone up, it's ten years old, stopped working at the end of last summer, was evaluated and cannot be repaired. Again, Parks and Rec is usually a department that comes in a little better than budget, so they may be able to find that six thousand dollars to buy out of this year's one.
Good point.
That's what I would ask them to try to do, if, if they really think it's necessary.
And most of, yeah, most of the rest of this centers around, well, with the exception of the wrestling mat, centers around the pools.
Um, and you had a question the last budget work session about Bayside Pool, and they did discuss it at the Maryland Council meeting, and they were not thrilled with the fact that it was being discussed.
Yeah, they, they, uh, actually spoke with Mayor, Mayor Jacobs, and they got the wrong, the wrong message. We didn't decide to eliminate it.
No, absolutely not.
Or re-close it.
Right.
It was talked about.
Right.
Only because there's not a lot of usage there, and in the, in the tight funding that we're in, I felt it was necessary to at least bring it up. But, uh, after talking about it, I think we all decided that we want to leave it in place and, and open, and it.
I mean, they're not even asking for any upgrades with it, all it needs is a, a lifeguard, and, and as shallow as it is, I don't think they need two down there.
Lifeguards. They have to.
Unless that's by law, they have to.
Yeah, because they have to, they, they're required, breaks are required, and so, unfortunately.
Because this is really, it's a more of a waiting pool, I mean, I think Jill said it was five feet deep, I don't think it is, I think it's. Huh?
Three to five, I think, is what it is.
Is it three to five, but I know the majority of it's, that's why some people like taking their little kids there, because they're.
I would like to see Jill look at trying to maintain Bayside and Melington's Pool using the lifeguard that has that certification for water quality.
Absolutely, yeah.
If we could order the, you know, you, uh, uh, obviously, it'd have to be researched. Can we get the chemicals on state contract, and so, or is, is, is it gonna be cheap, if that's all that it involves?
And that's mostly with the chemicals?
Yes, chemicals and maybe vacuuming those pools, is there anything wrong with the lifeguard doing that? Because they're so small.
I think they do, I think they do already.
I do think, okay.
Vacuum, I think they all vacuum.
Yeah, I think it's the, you have to have a certification, I think, for the chemicals.
For the chemicals, it's a certification.
And she said that most of her life, or a lot of her lifeguards have.
Yep.
And that was something that I didn't get fully out, but I, when I brought up possibly, and I don't know what the logistics of this would be, but maybe offer that as an elective for a semester, if we're in high school, so that maybe a dozen kids would want to get certified in this for being able, maybe not just in Kent County, but maybe they go to the beach for the summer or something like that. That's, or, or maybe even in the evenings at the, at the, um, community center.
I know that we've offered it in the past at the community center, Red Cross comes in, I don't know if we're currently doing, do you happen to know that either?
I tell you, it's a lot, it get even a little tougher with those lifeguards, because I seen an advertisement, I think it was on Facebook, where that Great Wolf Lodge that's opening up, up Elkton, that's the one thing they were advertising for, needed lifeguards, come Spaniard. Huh?
When are they opening?
Evidently it's soon.
I think, yeah, I think it's soon. I've heard people talk about potentially doing a little mini-vacation up there this summer, so.
It's supposed to be a big, a big deal, I mean, it's.
Just, just something I think we should look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Jill, th, th, this, this sliding board, um, I've never been, I've been at the pool, but I've never been in the pool. She said that this one's getting a little dangerous, the, the existing sliding board.
I think she feels a little uncomfortable with the fact that, yeah, it shoots the people out at the bottom, and they don't realize it's so deep, and.
I think this is the one.
But it wasn't the board that was unsafe, it was the fact that when they went down, it, it was over their heads where they dropped off, but.
I think that what she says, though, she's not talking about safety, she's saying an updated feature will lend to pool users continued interest by offering something different after twelve years.
Yep, yep, exactly.
So I don't know if it's so much a safety issue as.
They just want to add.
A new feature.
Yeah, and it's her last priority, so it's her, her lowest item on here.
Well, I mean, I would say she probably right, I just don't know that we, that we have the money for that.
Well, you can move it to next year, just bump it.
Well, I haven't, you sit on the board there, so you hear the pros and cons.
Yeah, last time I, we've only had one meeting, and we were talking about more baseball and softball at the time, really, because it was winter time, so we were geared towards that. But, uh, I think we have a meeting coming up.
I think usually, it may they have one.
Um, yeah, I think.
Maybe we put it off.
I was gonna say, maybe we put it off, and I'll bring it up at that.
One more year, because we do have the lowered replast or the shower.
Well, that's exactly, we got the replast.
We're gonna have that next year.
Correct, yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Just tell them it's gonna be postponed another year.
As far as the wrestling mat goes, I think, with the way the program has grown.
I think there's a lot of people out there.
I think that, that's a no-burner.
And we even, I, I tell you, we even approved that the last time, but they wanted to wait till now, because they want to put their emblem or something like.
Yeah, they wanted a special order.
That's spectacular, there's young boys, there's young men doing a heck of a job, and there's, and there's kids are too. Jacob's Kerwin daughter was, uh, second in the Nationals in Salisbury this weekend, last weekend. She beat, she lost to a two-time national champion.
Oh, my gosh.
Who did?
Jacob Kerwin's daughter.
Really?
Yep.
He was into that, he was into that.
Well, he, they're coaching, Joey and Jacob are, well, Joey will be coaching next year.
I got a grandson that's part of that, yeah.
Uh, but his daughter got second, I, I think it was in Salisbury, I think.
How about that? He was in them cage fights, I mean, them.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
The time replacement, there'll be so many years, so let's see, let's see what she says about that.
Yep, it's on a rotation.
Just regular wear and tear. Do you want to do one year Bayside, the next? They try and do something every year. Again, it's her second to bottom priority, but.
What's that?
The school furniture, right above the slide.
What they do is when something, one of the lounge chairs gets to the point where it can't be used, they take it away, and then during this refresh, basically, it, you know, gives another seat to people.
Well, not knowing how bad it is.
Yeah, her comment is just required due to regular wear and tear from public use and to maintain adequate amounts of pool deck furniture for patron use. A replacement, replenishment schedule of every other, every other year has been established.
So we've, in the past, we've replaced that much furniture.
And you can, yeah, if you look at the five years, it's twenty-five hundred dollars every other year, so they didn't get any last year, so they'd be asking for it this year.
We can ask Jill if they have money somewhere else in their budget this year that they could purchase that, if you'd like.
Sounds good.
See if they can find it.
Yeah.
It's every place in pool furniture, every other year.
It's not all, it's not, it's not full replacement, it's just a.
But we have, yeah, three different locations, so.
They might look at us, different brand furniture.
Yeah, exactly, no, they don't take everything out, it's just the stuff that has been beyond repair.
Okay, we're good with Parks and Rec? Grounds Maintenance just had one small request on page fifty nine.
No mowers.
Just forks for a fork clutch.
Yeah.
I think that's good, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have to have the mower conversation this year.
This KRM entrance contribution, we can cut, deal away with that completely.
Sorry.
You were on economic. That's on page fifty nine.
What, what you got?
Fifty nine is, oh no, I'm sorry, that's.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, yeah.
Yeah, it's on sixty-one.
I don't know how we can touch that, I mean.
You couldn't take it, if you couldn't, you'd away with it if you wanted to.
Right.
All right, just page sixty-three and four dots. So we just have several requests.
I think we take the landscaping, brick pavers out of there and leave the other tip, and.
I'm good with that.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
On the next one, sixty-seven? Is the election office?
And this is a mandate, correct?
Well, the office is a mandate, these are her requests.
Poll books is a state.
I'm gonna guess the poll books are a mandate.
And they got pushed out from this year, there was supposed to have been twenty-three.
Yep. Now, I wonder, Maryland Voters Desktop Computers, can Scott repurpose? I mean, he has tons of those desktop, desktop computers from when we replaced everybody's tablets, I'm wondering if he could reconfigure.
Be good to look, that'd be worth looking into, I think.
I mean, our IT office has been putting up, pushing out the message with partner agencies, we have tons of those desktops when we gave everybody laptops so they could go home and work during the pandemic.
Why would they need a laser jet printer? I mean, aren't we printing to our copy machines for the most part now in the county?
I don't know if that'd be a good question for her, I don't really.
I don't know if they have one, I mean, I assume they do, but I can't attest to that.
I would assume they have, would have a central, I don't think we buy laser jets anymore.
We don't.
You want us to get more information on that?
I would like to know just what we're mandated to do. There was legislation that was passed that mandates that we do something, do you remember what it was, Jill? The election office.
Every year, there's a new mandate pushed down.
I think it's the poll books, they change software, they change hardware, it's. Well, we'll get an answer to that question.
And it looks like that with the poll books, it's a fifty-fifty split with the state.
And then on, on page eighty-eight.
Would you say eighty-eight?
Wait a minute, isn't there another one in there?
Is there one in between?
I think there's one in between, oh, there's Ag Pres, which I'm not sure that there's much to look at there. Yep.
I guess page eighty-two.
What about POS? I have them on seventy-three.
Oh, yeah, there was one that was, okay, seventy-three.
So the key, the key thing here with POS is we pay ten percent, the state pays ninety.
What page do you want?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
So thirty-one hundred dollar. Am I looking at that right?
Sixty-nine thousand.
And that's our ten percent, so we're gonna double the ninety percent of that.
Right.
So we really do get a big bang for the buck with those dollars?
I think you're almost foolish to fool with them when ninety percent of it is coming from the state.
I'm sure, we probably have conversation about the middle school project in our presentation, but twenty-four has the final cost of the high school group, we did both of that this year, but then in twenty-four, they're asking for dollars to start the design. The feasibility study, I guess, is in progress. I've asked her for updated costs, I don't think they have anything yet, but it's, you know, thirty-two million dollar project.
And that's just our share.
Right. So I think the key question would be, is do we want to start in twenty-four? And this project will be financed, so there's really no impact to the operating budget, because we will not be able to pay cash for this project, clearly so.
So when you say finance, how's that gonna work?
So we borrow the money probably for twenty or thirty years, and we have a debt service payment?
Similar to the public safety.
Correct.
Right. And you're gonna see on an upcoming agenda, where Mike and Pat have been working very hard to get the documents in order to start the ball rolling with a bond rating, a financial advisor and bond counsel, so we're really seriously looking at going to New York and getting a bond rating, so that we can issue bonds to pay for these big projects.
We can't borrow thirty-two million dollars locally from small banks, you know, we, this is, the Public Safety Building will be the largest project that we've ever done, and then this one is right behind it, so. And the biggest question we have to look at is, you know, can we afford to be paying debt service on both of them?
That's where I, I mean, I'm just, it scares me to death, and I don't sleep at night thinking about both of these projects at the same time, I just don't know how the county can survive doing both of them at the same time, I just don't. And I, and they're both important, they're both important.
Do you remember the debt service numbers by any chance, Pat?
I, I think.
I know you've run those numbers in the past.
Yeah, I got them, I should have put them in here, I didn't, I can bring them back, I wanna say in the neighborhood of six million for both projects, but I don't hold me to it.
So that's the annual.
And it depends, you know, if we extend the life, if we were to do thirty years versus twenty, the payments would be lower, we would, you know, you really don't want to go out much more than the life of the building, where you're gonna start to be replacing major HVACs or roofs, because you don't want to be paying debt while you're having to do, you know, repairs and and those kinds of things, so. If I had to guess, probably thirty years, I guess would probably be the term we would look at. So I, I'll give those debt service numbers for you. I, I mean, I think we have to finish the Kent County High School roof, because it's, it's in process, and it's carrying over from last year, so I don't have any other choice there.
I'd say, yeah, sure, and that's the only highest, I mean, obviously, we gotta keep it in shape.
Sure.
But where this project lands on our five-year plan, I think, would be a topic of conversation when this.
Well, just stop and think about what's going on in the future now, if the, if the, if the estimates of that Kerwin, where we have to come up with a million six in new money every year for about seven years in a row, and we only take in about a million new dol, how many new dollars we got, I mean, and the last ten years, I think the average was, we come up with a million one hundred thousand in new money every year, going into the budget.
Oh, you mean, yeah, it's usually somewhere between a million and three million, it's usually, yeah, it's usually two to three.
Okay, so if they're asking for one point six million, so you gotta raise, you're gonna have, that's, that's a tax increase, and that's ignoring everything we've talked about last week and what, I mean, that's ignoring the rest of the county. I just, unless something happens, I just don't know what's gonna happen, but.
And then, I mean, honestly, this is one-time cost, I guess we traditionally have to pay the, the design and the architect, but, you know, maybe if they really want to move forward with the design, they can use the fund balance dollars. But you, I guess you really wouldn't want to move forward if the project wasn't shortly behind you, because then the plans would be out of date, so.
And they'd have to, they'd have to be updated. And just keep in mind, keep in the back of your head, that by raising taxes by one penny, very, very rough estimates,
Three hundred thousand.
you're gonna gain three hundred thousand. You're talking about a six million dollar debt service payment.
I'm personally not ready to sign off on a school, Jesse, I'm gonna go through one, one year of this Kerwin, till they figure out what it's all about before I put us in that, for that school, I think.
So, should we, for now, should we push it out, so move the three, the three point three million into twenty-five, and the, and the construction into twenty-six, so it's out of this year's budget, so still?
It's gonna stand a lot better chance getting me to vote for it if you push it out a year, but that's, I'm, I'm only one, and I'm, I just. There's so many unknowns with this Kerwin, that it, I'm like, Albert, you, you can, you get, you stay up nights thinking about it, you can lose some sleep over that.
I think Ronnie makes a good point, and I, I agree with what he's saying at this point, only because of the financial situation, it's so unknown. And, you know, this is something that I think that they should have engaged with us a long time ago about, and maybe they did.
It's been on the radar for a few years now, we've been talking about it.
With no commitment.
You know, I'd love nothing more than to see a new middle school built.
I got a bunch of little grandkids that's gonna go through that thing, I'd love to see a brand-new facility, but I'm just scared of what the future holds, and.
The blueprints.
The wealth formula.
I, I agree with, with, with both Ronnie and the sheriff, I think that there's no doubt we'd love to have a new middle school, and I think that, like, I mean, I know that there's been talk of it, but I don't think that there's been talk of it in conjunction with Kerwin, I think there's been talk of, we know Kerwin's coming, and it's here, now we want a new middle school, and, and, but for us, we've got to balance the two together, and I just, in all honesty, I don't, I don't see where the money is, we don't have the money.
Well, you'll hear, you're, you're gonna hear from the fire companies tonight, and, I mean, everybody's one, but if you, if, if the predict, projections of Kerwin turn out to be any worse close, I don't, people can't, people can't stand us raising taxes five cents a year for seven years in a row.
Well, that's, I mean, what, how, how does that bode for economic development?
We're second highest on the shore.
Or.
Already.
Or tourism, or bringing new people here, or keeping the retention of the, of the younger people that we all, everybody, there's not a person you talk to that doesn't want that.
I mean, I think our tax rate is somewhere between, it's around fifteen cents higher than we announced.
And listen, people can raise hell all they want, but we've done a pretty good job, in my twenty-five years, I think we've raised taxes one time, and that's when O'Malley took the five, all of our gas money away from us, and we've learned to live within our means, and we got a pretty damn nice place to live. I mean, it's, and to jump off the deep end and with, with the future of what it's hope, what it looks like in the future, I just, I can't bring myself to be enthused with that.
Well, I think, I think there are gonna be some hard decisions that are gonna be made in the upcoming years, and some of those hard decisions are gonna deal with regionalization, and maybe that means the schools, maybe it means other services, but I don't see how we're gonna get away from that.
That's what I would like, I mean.
The county is tiny compared to.
I'm hoping that after we get through this one year of Kerwin.
Let us see what it holds first.
Let's see, let's see what.
Because I think there's gonna be some changes made.
What the bigger counties are gonna be, I think there's gonna be changes made.
I think so too, and I don't.
I certainly would encourage them to, although we don't have a lot of say in that.
And I don't want to add fuel to the fire when it comes to this wealth formula, but this wealth formula is affecting this page on our budget sheet, again, I mean, I.
Every time you turn around, it does.
It's, it's a drum that I beat often, because we are responsible for fifty percent of the construction costs, because we're so wealthy. A less wealthy county is paying a fraction of what we are paying on the total bill, so yet again, the wealth formula is biting us.
Yeah. And that for pupil cost, where we pay the lion's share of it, other counties pay pennies towards it compared to us. It's just, it's just, it ain't Kerwin that upsets me so bad, it's the wealth formula, because everything revolves around that. This is just, that hundred and fifty thousand that we went and testified about, and we got it, we end up getting, we end up getting twenty-five because of the wealth formula, and we have, Christ, I don't, keeps me from having to go over to that place and testify in Annapolis, I'd almost paid debt myself and stayed home, if I, not quite, but I said almost.
Well, I, I agree, I think that there's gonna be, hopefully, there will be some, some new reasoning coming from Annapolis next year, but I also think that we need to, and I say we, I don't know whether that's, that's us as the county, or the, the school board, the commissioners of the school board, really need to, to start thinking about the regionalization of partnering with.
For lots of different, a variety of services, absolutely.
Agreed, correct, correct, yeah.
So are we agreed we should move it out and leave it on the schedule?
I am, I am, I'd leave it on the schedule and just move it a year.
Push it out a year, let us have a year of Kerwin first.
And if they happen to be listening, they need to know that all three of us sitting here are committed to
Absolutely, yeah.
something at some point, but hopefully everyone understands that this is probably not the year to do that.
Yeah, absolutely, the, you know, we know we're not gonna get away for, with, forever without a new school, that, we know that.
I think the one they want to replace is seventy years old, it seems it's better days, probably.
Page eighty-five, just the library, they really just have.
So my, my question is, can't you enter through the back entrance with no steps?
And the side.
And the side, yes, okay, so they also want a front entrance, that, where there are no stairs getting up into the library? Okay, so they also want a front entrance that, where there are no stairs getting up into the library?
Well, I think if we have two other alternative routes of entry or points of entry, I think that.
That's good.
This year, we're gonna have to, my vote is to.
I hear you.
Just switch that back.
Okay, water wastewater, page eighty-eight.
Thank you.
This is always a fun one.
So there's lots of requests here. Mike has them prioritized, so I don't know if you wanna start from the bottom instead of the top?
One thing for sure, history's gonna show us they're not gonna get all of them done next year.
Good point.
I tend to say that, yes.
I bet you, you can take, take the most, the first half and take the other half off. That's my opinion, I don't know. Mike might say different, but these things have been on the agenda for a great while and, what is the total amount?
Eight-hundred-ninety-six thousand.
Basically nine-hundred thousand.
The bottom two would be four, if you took the bottom two off, that's four hundred thousand.
That's what I would do and tell him when he gets those done, if the top half done, come see it.
Sounds like you're saying the existing press is out of service. I'm surprised it's still not getting on their list.
I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say that if it's out of service, then we are simply delivering more water to the landfill. Yep, yep. So it's not that it's putting the whole operation out of service, it's just.
So are you saying the bottom two or you're?
Why don't we give him a half a million dollars, tell him to spend it on whatever, what it's most important.
We're losing our audience.
I don't blame him. I don't blame him.
I'm good with that, I mean.
Well, I think he should still provide a priority for us to know what he's.
They're in priority order.
He has prioritized them and this is it.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, I think if you cut, if you cut from the bottom, you're following his wishes.
All right, and he has eight hundred and some.
Eight ninety, almost nine hundred thousand dollars.
If you take the bottom two, you're gonna take out four hundred thousand.
That leaves a half a million.
I like your idea.
Give him a half a million dollars and.
If he needs to reprioritize, he can, yeah.
He can use.
Because that one pipe that he was talking about, it's only like twenty-two thousand dollars, but. It was leaking or something.
It's, yes, it's leaky or the joint, or it did not match up.
That's right.
The joint is failed and it's leaking.
Then he needs to do that, out of that five hundred thousand. He can do whatever he wants out of that five hundred thousand.
I can fix that, that flex seal tape they got.
Yeah. Why don't you show him how to do that?
Go on down there, Alex. I'll tell you what.
My problem would be climbing a tower.
We'll give you, we'll give you two hundred.
Oh, I'd climb that.
Two hundred dollars. The Bayside.
And we also have the, the projects.
Oh, yeah. Ninety-nine.
Yeah. Because we got money from the Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund from Hogan to pay for the KRM entrance and the two projects listed here, Wharton Water and Sewer Service Extensions and the majority of the Millington Wastewater Treatment Plant design. But there still is a piece of it that is left for county funding for each of those.
But I think we got to do that, right, to get.
And we were given money for the majority of the projects, so that this is just the little piece that the county's on the floor.
I mean, I think we have to do, do.
And then you have Bayside land name?
Paige, you wanna work?
I have chocolate.
I need espresso.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
So the really, the pool furniture is in here and the other one is the pier and bulkhead replacement where the state is paying for a little under half of that project. And I think we got that, we got that grant extended to the end of twenty-twenty-three, so if we don't do this project this year, or.
I think we're at the end of our extensions.
Yeah. And there is extension we have, obviously, we plan on this money. Now the project has increased in price.
Right.
The DNR has said there is a possibility we could get more than the four-thirty.
Well, to me, that's one of the prettiest harbors.
No question about that.
And I think we need to maintain it.
And we certainly don't wanna lose half, almost half the funding.
We're giving forty to fifty percent of the state.
That's one area where Kent County gets its fair share.
Talk about economic tourism.
And we've done nothing to that arena really since we purchased it.
No, no. We paid a million and a half dollars for that place and the state gave us a million and a quarter. We put up about three hundred, two hundred, and then we sold a travel lift down there for twenty-five thousand. And that pool, whenever it was there, then the state come in and put the boat ramp in, they paid for ninety percent of that.
That is a nice boat ramp, yeah.
You guys, you guys did well, like.
I think so, that's your first.
Yeah, we need to cut out a million four fifty and my calculation says we just, a million five oh one, so we did it. You did it, so. It's a good start. So we'll redo the numbers and update the schedules to show us where we are next week. And I think we have, we're starting to have the agencies come in next week, is that right?
That's correct.
So, we can either look at the allocations, like you don't have to have every agency come in, or we can look at salaries. I'm not sure if you have a preference. Would you rather look at the new positions and the reclassifications or the allocations?
New positions or allocations?
Salary-related issues or allocations from other agencies?
I'd like to have Shelley Devine down from Wayne. You know, they're asking for four paramedics. Are these gonna be part-timers or are these gonna be full-timers?
No, so these are full-time. Right now, if we are fully staffed, if we are fully staffed, we can man all three locations twenty-four-seven. If we drop under full staffing, we have somebody quit or retire, then we have a couple of part-timers that we start plugging shifts. If they can't fill the shifts, that's when we have stations not covered. So, to cover, you know, Wayne was thinking, well, if we hire one new one for every location plus one person that rotates, we will have absolutely zero. But like I said, as we are right now, we can fully staff all three locations with a paramedic and an EMT. It's when we fall beneath full staffing that.
And that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Twenty-four-seven, three locations.
And that's something I think, I'm sorry, but I just think that that's something we need to.
Oh, I'm gonna say.
Talk to these gentlemen and like Ronnie said, I mean, I certainly don't wanna show any, we appreciate everything that they do, but, you know, we are. The county is now taking that lion's share off of their plate.
Yeah, it's huge, and yeah, they're still, they're still retaining the lion's share of the billing. So they're not even going out on the calls, but they are retaining the money for their ambulance going.
I think when that little left.
When a, they.
Are we still on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When an employee.
When she retired.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that the county is continuing to bill at the county level.
We don't bill, the stations bill.
Is there a reason why the county doesn't? Because they did it one time, I think.
We were supposed to get twenty-five percent of the call if one of our people went on an ambulance. And then they took over the billing, see?
They wanted to.
We didn't even see it no more.
This was years ago.
Huh?
Years ago, they took over the billing.
Yes, yes.
Before I even started with the county.
I don't think we've seen the numbers. We, Pat can't tell you what's generated by that billing service.
No, they bill themselves.
They bill themselves and they have companies do it for them.
They hire a company and the company bills. So we do not have visibility in that whatsoever.
I've heard that it was, it helped them out a lot, that there was some money being collected, but I don't know that.
Because the reality of it is it more than pays for their ambulance side of the house. Most of the fire companies have an ambulance side and a fire company, a fire, firefighting side. And the ambulance is what helps support the fire company side. They get more in billings than they actually put out on the ambulance side and that helps them basically subsidize the firefighting side of their operation.
And their donations, there will be way more people donate to an ambulance fund.
Absolutely.
Than a firefighting fund because almost everybody has to ride in one sometime or another.
Yep.
Much fewer people have to depend on the fire truck, but, I mean, when you do, they're important.
I'm just thinking, you know, in good times, it would be nice to have four paramedics.
I'd like to be here, I'd like to be here long enough to say we did it. Got, you know, it's gonna be pretty good to say we, we got a paramedic and EMT in three places in Kent County, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And we started with a half of a deputy, or a half of a paramedic.
And right now, fully staffed, we got it, we're there.
We got it right now.
We got it right now, but nobody gets sick.
If somebody leaves or gets sick, then we got a problem.
And, but I also say, if, if we're having trouble, like, hiring a new paramedic, where are we gonna get four new ones? If we're having trouble replacing the ones that we, the positions we currently have.
And I'm wondering, what are they gonna do other than ride two in a vehicle?
Agreed.
Which is great to have two.
Oh, absolutely.
Paramedics on scene, but.
Right, right.
Especially in a bad situation. But would two be enough to allow us that flexibility, two full-timers as opposed to four? So, just something to think about. And maybe Wayne can weigh in on that.
So, next week, you're gonna have Arnessa from the library come in and Bill Webb from the health department, soil conservation and Dr. Couch. So probably be a good week to probably talk about allocations because you're gonna hear a lot of those presentations. And some of the bigger ones, the health, the health department is the biggest ask that we have and the library is also a large one, so. And the schools are, clearly. We're gonna start at one o'clock and they're gonna, we're gonna have those people do their presentations and then we'll do a workshop for however long you wanna.
And keep in mind, next week, we have the ten AM meeting, so we'll start at ten AM, get through whatever is on the agenda for next week, which the agenda's pretty much already set for next week. And then at one o'clock, we'll reconvene for the work session.
When Mr. Webb comes in, will he have Dr. Spencer with him, do you think?
He usually does not.
Emily.
Yeah, he usually has Emily, McCoy.
Possible that, I've got some information about the school nurse program. And there's some issues there as far as the level of funding that the school is willing to allocate.
And you're gonna have Karen Couch and Bill Webb here next week.
So it might be.
You could, you have both people in the room.
It might be nice to have Dr. Spencer here to weigh in, if he's available.
See, I learned something, I didn't even know if Dr. Spencer was still involved in it.
So, yeah, Bill Webb is our health officer, but he is not a doctor. He's a mister. So you have to have a doctor for the medical side of things. And so we've retained Dr. Spencer as the medical doctor for our health department. And he deals with anything where you need an actual MD.
Oh, yes, I did confirm their appointment. We can reach out though.
I mean, it seems to be, I mean, from the numbers that I've seen, it's a very minimal ask.
What you're gonna hear from the horn of Kent County Public Schools is that they're so pressured to do this, the Kerwin mandate, that they're gonna have to trim in other places. This might be one of those other places where they're.
It might be, well, I've got some other ideas for them to trim too, if they're willing to do that.
So will we, we just wait now for the meeting to start? I mean, we're done with.
Unless you have anything else you wanna discuss today.
No, fine.
We have about fifty minutes. We'll recess for about fifty minutes and reconvene at six.
Okay.
Thank you, it was a really good start.
Thank you. I accomplished what you asked.